The next speaker is Sarah Wang.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Sarah. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Sarah Wang. I live in Uptown Kingston. I actually have my own comments here and then I have, I was told it was okay for me to read some from another citizen who couldn't get here tonight. So if that's okay, I'm gonna read both. The first is from my neighbor, Jevana Rigini, who lives in Ward 5. This past July, a FOIL request was made to the city of Kingston for any and all land acquisition and/or development agreements between the city and any companies related to the Kingstonian project. As recently as October 2020, the city claimed it was not in possession of any documents other than a 2017 memorandum of understanding between Kingston and Wright Architects and a 2017 assignation of this MOU to the JM Development Group. The city did not provide any further explanation despite a request for clarification. In late October of 2019, after much public outcry and hard work by numerous advocacy groups, the mayor announced in a self-congratulatory press release that the hard-won affordable housing units would be documented in an agreement between the city and the development team. Based on the city's response to the FOIL, however, this agreement does not appear to have materialized. It is discouraging that with everything the administration is ready to just give away, nothing in the public interest is formally documented beyond an MOU that is currently under legal dispute. The point I'd like to make is that it has taken an unbelievable amount of scrutiny by the public on multiple levels to highlight flaws in a process that deserves a lot more public transparency. Bad precedents are being set, valuable community assets are being given away, and will be irreparably harmed. We are being asked to trust where that trust is not being earned or guaranteed by our elected officials. According to the Ulster County Parcel Viewer, the parking lot at 21 North Front Street has a 2020 full market assessed value of $804,444 for 1.4 acres. The public has yet to receive any estimation of the Fair Street Extension's real value as we head into a proposed transfer of property title to the Kingston Local Development Corporation. The street is used and is necessary in addition to being a key historic component of the National Registered District. The mayor's assertion that it doesn't serve any purpose requires serious substantiation. Council members, please give some thought to what you are about to do and guide the process in a manner befitting your elected positions. Rather than walking in political lockstep with this administration, I hope that you seriously consider your role as public servants and seek guidance outside of Corporation Council for your deliberations. Many thanks for your time and consideration. This is Jevana Rigini. And these are my comments. Sarah Wang. I oppose giving away the Fair Street Extension or any city property to a for-profit project that will benefit wealthy developers far more than it will the residents of Kingston or Ulster County. The outrageously oversized pilot for this project was voted down by the school board, the entity that will be most severely impacted by the loss of funds. But the county IDA changed its rules to accommodate these developers. How much more of our city and our money should we be expected to put in the pockets of developers who can't even guarantee there will be an increase in parking spaces? And with all due respect to the majority leader, you know the city will not gain 400 parking spaces or even 100 or even 50. The residents of the city of Kingston deserve to know the assessed value of the Fair Street Extension and a chance to respond before the council decides whether or not to give it away. The Fair Street Extension is a historical resource. It serves a vital purpose in moving traffic through Uptown Kingston. The street is actively used and serves as a relief valve for the often backed-up traffic at North Front, Wall, and Fair Streets. A single traffic study paid for by the developers taking place over several hours was woefully inadequate. Transferring the Fair Street Extension to the Kingston Local Development Corporation puts Mayor Steve Noble in charge of the decision as president of the board and having appointed all of the members. The Kingstonian developer Brad Jordan was still listed as a member of the KLDC on the city's website as of today. The KLDC bylaws state that members should include those in the minority community. Beyond having only one woman serving and she does not live in Kingston, membership doesn't reflect the current diverse population of the city and therefore does not reflect the city as a whole. I have been waiting for three years for one governing body in the region to act with integrity and conscience in this deliberation. I fear I will be disappointed again, and yet I ask again, please do the right thing, consider the needs of the city and your community before the desires of rich developers who are only interested in what benefits them. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Sarah. Just before I call the next speaker, if you did not sign up to speak ahead of time and would like to, you could send me a message in the Q&amp;A or at the end, we'll just, I'll have you raise your hands. So just want to throw that out there. The next speaker is Clark Richters. Clark, you should be here and unable to mute yourself.
Oh, yep, thank you very much.
Clark, if you could just state your name and full address for the record, please.
Clark Richters, Garrigan Drive, Kingston. I come tonight virtually to speak and as a resident of Kingston and slash part of the media, looking, you know, I'm always the person that, for the best take, I've been filming the council meetings and really have an insight of government. And since this whole coronavirus epidemic hit us, it got me really thinking of how the way the council has really had that ability to provide these meetings, not only they do on online, but they can also provide them on TV, which as of today, unless I film it and put it on there, make a DVD, any council meeting or meetings are not being broadcast on a public access TV, which the council, City of Kingston, receives the franchise tax fee, which is an extra tax, that they put in your general fund and they don't invest in public access slash informative community of what's going on. As far as any kind of, they have to right away use that station right from the mayor's desk to inform, you know, the public of what's going on with the updates. He only puts his videos online and thinks that that's good. That's not really what you're supposed to be doing. If you're there, if you're elected official, you're supposed to be there representing the people, doing any way possible. Of course, if nobody brings it up, which I'm sure, I'm sure they're, you know, this whole discussion about public access is, it's a sore to the political environment of Kingston, but you know what? It's the right thing to do. If you're gonna inform people that have that internet access, which as of today, you have to have internet access to watch these meetings or you don't get it. So, and then I tried to explain to the new council members that there is a resolution 137 in 1995, which made that states that the city has to have a cable commission that oversees that. For some reason, the resolution doesn't seem to be on the charter of the city's website. And it seems to, you guys are not familiar with what's, I mean, what's going on, which you should be because right now, as of today, again, the contract for Spectrum is which I would say outdated. It's not being updated, which gives Spectrum, Cablevision, internet, that's why they're charging people so much for cable, because the city Kingston's common council is not really keeping them to their agreements. And then I'm gonna go on, and that's up for Cablevision, but I want to go on and say that I, not an agreement of giving away Fair Street Extension only because it will cause a traffic bottleneck up there and it will not benefit right away of the people of Kingston. And it will only benefit the developers that they're gonna be making money and and it won't benefit us as public. And then I want to go on to the Elmerdore Street Bridge, which I'm not sure how it got milled by the DBW, which they should have known that there was wood under there, but that should be fixed right now. And that's a tragic weight happening you're allowing. You have to be concerned about people walking over that bridge with the wood, with the bridge having a hole in the center. Especially when you're adding like concrete roadblocks there, which were putting more weight on the bridge itself. I'm not an engineer, but I'm just saying if if the bridge is, you can't drive over it, you shouldn't be walking over it, and the council should bond right away to whatever cost to get that bridge fixed as soon as possible before something drastic happens, especially with the snow and stuff like that over there. It's really, it's like, it's an old, it's like a 125-year-old bridge that has never really been maintained well and needs to be addressed as soon as possible for the safety of the public over there. Either with the rail trail, if you're having, I mean, the rail trails, people are still walking underneath it unless they block it off. But that would be a concern of mine, too. And that's it. Like, I would encourage you guys to employ the cable commission. I got recognized through, the town was so populous, which they put their meetings on TV, that I was an advocate for public access and they gave me a little certificate reward. And I just wanted to let my council know at the city that I think that it would be really a good thing publicly to have that station to not only put your meetings on there or online, but to to really work out something where the Kingston residents are benefit out of their internet access and cable access, because if you, right now, minimum cost of internet and cable, I think it's $150. I just get internet, so I'm only, like, it's $90. So I think the cost of it really needs to be discussed because you're gonna have people that don't, you know, that haves and they don't haves, and most likely you're gonna have, with everything going on with people losing their jobs, you're not gonna have people, a lot of people paying a franchise fee. And then you will lose it at the end of the day. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Clark.
And I'll see you next month. I'll be speaking next month about the same thing.
The next speaker is Jean Jacobs. Jean, you're in here or you just have to unmute yourself? Hi Jean, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please. Jean, are you there? Is anybody here, Jean? Should be unmuted and able to speak. Looks good on our side. Try one other thing here. You there, Jean? I see that you're unmuted. Can you speak? You may have to turn your volume up on your side because on our side, we're okay. We're gonna have to come back to you. Come back to you, Jean. The next speaker is Marissa Morvelli.
Hi, hi everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could just state your address, thank you.
I'm Marissa Morvelli, 16 Noon Lane. I respectfully request that the common council not relinquish Fair Street Extension. Too many of this project's approvals to date have been based on unscrutinized numbers. The community needs an independent traffic study to understand the impact of closing the street. And incredibly, we don't even have a parking study that illustrates the need for a garage and all the public resources that this garage will require. Not only does Fair Street Extension currently provide direct pedestrian access to the plaza, which is used by many, closing it and topping it with a garage entrance will irreversibly destroy a defining feature of the historic district. This duck's identity and significance are rooted in a sighting on an elevated plateau. The edges of which served as the original boundaries of the development, sorry, the district. And those boundaries are still very palpable on North Front Street. Keeping the extension as an accurate public street is one way to preserve this feature while also breaking the monolithicness of the proposed development. The historic district itself is a vital economic resource for Kingston and a generic inward-looking development can easily spoil that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. The next speaker is Phil Erner. Looks like he may not no longer be here. I'll come back in case you come back and he comes back into the meeting. The next speaker is Sean Crimmens. Sean, you should just be able to unmute yourself now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Sean Crimmens. Currently reside at 1025 Creeklocks Road in Rosendale. Just a little bit about myself, just very briefly. I was born in Poughkeepsie and living in the Hudson Valley my whole life. Purchased a home in Kingston on Third Avenue in 2007. Still own the home, I rented out. And now we reside down in Rosendale, my wife's daughter and I, in the City of Kingston School District. I just want to let you know that I know what it's like being a council person, or at least being on that side of the aisle. For about a decade, I was one of the deputy town engineers of Poughkeepsie. I know how difficult it can be. I know that a project of this magnitude has a large stock of benefit units, which might come in very useful when it comes time to bond a capital project, such as a wastewater treatment plant upgrade or so forth. I know nobody likes to see any vacancies. And those vacancies of buildings don't generate income. Which really leads me into the pilot. I do agree with the school board's decision to say no to the pilot. Although I know they're gonna be getting a few million dollars at the beginning. Nobody has a crystal ball. 25 years is a long time. It's a quarter of a century. And who knows how many students might come out of residents living inside of that Kingstonian. As far as Fair Street is concerned. I personally believe that it's not a good idea to eliminate a city street. You have an urban area that is very dense. And I think eliminating that street might create confusion. I think people will become frustrated. I think that reversing the directions of Fair Street and Wall Street is a bad idea because it seems that the entire Kingstonian itself is, the whole goal is to change the face of Uptown by literally making people come into Uptown, well, one of the ways, by Fair Street where they come directly to the Kingstonian, where it's a dead end. The thing that makes the Uptown District special is the fact that it is home to some of the oldest buildings in the country. That's what makes it special. And now, when people are leaving the Uptown District, they're going to be leaving on Wall Street. They're gonna be leaving through the area that makes the district special to begin with. I know the catalyst for this entire project, from what I've read, was parking. I know that the mayor went ahead and tried to solve some parking issues. And I got the architect that helped him with some of those parking lots up there on Front Street. And they revisited the site of the old parking garage. But I think Steve Noble, Mayor Noble, tried to do something very noble, which was he tried to make everyone happy. He went and he spoke to all the shareholders in the Uptown area and asked them what they wanted. And people said, "We want retail." "We want apartments. We want a hotel." And he tried to do all these things. The end of the result was the Kingstonian, which addressed everything to make everybody happy. But I think that the creation of the Kingstonian is actually going to cause a parking problem as opposed to solving it. I can't see how adding 143 units and retail space and a hotel is gonna do anything but cause an issue with parking. And not for nothing, to use this parking garage, you're gonna have to leave Uptown. You're gonna have to go to the plaza. And not for nothing, the rendering, the architectural rendering at the back of that building, from what I read, was supposed to look like an old warehouse. I hate to say it, but it kind of looks like a multi-colored vinyl-sided air handler at the top of a skyscraper. Just say it. It doesn't really fit the character of the Uptown District, and I think it's a real disservice to the Uptown District. It makes it less special. Just very briefly, I think the entire project kind of reminds me of what I read about the removal of the historic post office. At that time, they were auctioning off the post office, I believe, for a dollar. It was in such disrepair, the decision was made to demo it. And now in its place, we have a fast food restaurant. And I think Kingstonites immediately felt regret about that. I think we're at that crossroad right now. I don't think anyone could look at that fast food restaurant and not think to themselves, "Why did we do this?" And I hate to say it, so I know you guys have been working hard and trying to do the right thing, but I think this project is going to be a white elephant. And I am afraid that everyone is going to be associated with it. Will be associated with it. And just to conclude, I know that it is impossible to make everyone happy and to give everybody what they want. The solution I found just when working in Poughkeepsie and other municipalities is that you give everybody something. You don't give them exactly what they want, but you give them something. And I think the something in this case is keeping Fair Street, keeping the parking garage that was the catalyst of this whole project to begin with, fix the architectural rendering so that it doesn't look like an air handler. And you have an entire city block, the opposite side of Fair Street, which you can use for retail, a hotel. That aspect of the project is, it's very nice looking. It fits the character. And then you, everybody gets something. And you can use that space for the desire to just shrink the magnitude of the project down. I think that would be the best thing to do at these crossroads. All right. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Hello?
Oh, sorry, I muted myself earlier. Sorry about that. The next speaker is Rose Quinn. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, Andrea. My name is Rose Quinn. I am a Kingston resident. I live on 78 Downstreet. My professional title is Coordinator of Traffic Safety Education for SUNY Ulster. I also work as a bike safety educator for the Ulster YMCA. I sit on the Ulster County Traffic Safety Board and I do extensive volunteer work with Bike Friendly Kingston, with Project Resilience, and with Kingston Mutual Aid. I've also served on the Kingston Complete Streets Advisory, excuse me, and have served on many other civic projects and advisory boards. Thank you all for allowing me the time to express my strong opposition to the gifting of North Front Street to private developers for a parking garage and for luxury housing. I believe this is not in the interest of the vast majority of those who currently reside in the city of Kingston. And as the rightful owners of the majority of the property being offered as a gift without compensation, I am saying we need more time to understand the gravity of what's being asked here. Giving up a city street to a private interest should not be taken lightly. It is your job as elected officials to disseminate the truth so that we may decide. Please us, give us the time and information we need to do this. The Kingstonian project is not in the interest of those who already live in Kingston. I will use myself as an example. I am a professional. I am an invested community member. And I could not afford to live in this gated community. My salary is squarely average for this county, and I thought enough to be housing secure in Kingston. But sadly, this may no longer be true. And so now, like many others, I am living with some level of housing insecurity. Yet at this moment, my political leadership seems to want me to find it in my heart to support the notion that this project is somehow for my good. How so? When there is clearly been disregard for my own interests from the start of this project on the part of the investors and the developers? My school board, who I voted for, don't want this. Fellow residents throughout the city and throughout the county have called out large flaws in this proposal and dishonesty on the part of those pushing the Kingstonian. And that is enough for me to say, we need more time to take a look at this before we give a city street away. Currently, there is an unprecedented housing need in my city. Are you aware, council members, that last night, while a brutal storm raged through our city, human beings who until recently lived in this city were literally scrambling for cover because of displacement? Yet somehow, a person like me, who finds herself in the housing precarious realm with just one bad lease away from having to leave this city, that my priority should be to consider the returns on investors' dividends? This is not what I voted for. City streets are part of the commons, therefore, direct property of the people. A city street is not the property of the mayor or even the common council. If a property is taken from the people who own it, they should have the right to be a part of this conversation. We have an opportunity here to come up with a fair equitable strategy for the use of this public space which best serves everyone. And we, the people, deserve a chance to figure out what this right deal for us might be. Parking garages and gated communities are things of a bygone era. One only needs to go to the Shell, formerly known, well, still known, but the Shell, known as the Ulster Valley Mall, Ulster County Mall, and its vast empty parking lots that match its vast empty stores to see that parking-based economies simply don't work. There are other solutions to the problem of the parking issues in Uptown. With just a few safety improvements and by creating strategies in moving people, like running a loop bus out of the Kingston Plaza, we could utilize its tons of already unused spaces, which now sit mainly unused. This could just as easily address the supposed parking shortage of Uptown Kingston for a fraction of the cost. Parking garages are never desperately needed, particularly in the time of COVID, gentrification, and climate crisis. We need to let go of old failed approaches and consider the world we are becoming, not the world we were in in 1950. So please, do the right thing. Don't let this happen. Not until the people have had their chance to fully understand what is being asked of them. Thank you very much, council members, for your time.
The next speaker is Tanya Garment, who is also, we got a message from Phil Erner, who was going to speak. He couldn't get on, so Tanya is going to read his comments and then read her own comments. And as I said in the Q and A, just hang tight if you want to speak and didn't sign up, I will get to you. All right, Tanya, just unmute yourself.
Hi. Thanks. Tanya Garment, 102 Worth Street, Kingston. So Phil Erner wrote, "I would like city council to justify why the Kingstonian should receive any money in the pilot while so many in our city cannot afford their current housing, or why the city didn't instead use such funds to bid, instead to bid on giant real estate owner E and M's properties to turn those into affordable housing." So now I'll read mine. Firstly, I just want to say that the pilot was a disastrous mistake. Passing of the pilot was a disastrous mistake. And while this is a excusal, basically, from paying what the normal rate of taxes would be, we all will make up for it. These are funds that the city and other municipalities throughout the city, throughout the county, are giving up. We are, in essence, spending money on this, all of us. Because in order to pay for the services that they will require, that are municipal services, that'll have to be made up for. And we're not seeing any benefit as a result. I could argue each benefit that is, that has been pronounced, supposedly, that this Kingstonian will bring, but I'm not going to take up time doing that right now. The secret process as complete corporation council would have you believe that the facets of the site plan review that the planning board will be going into next, that are the same as what they approved of during the secret process, should be approved by the planning board during the site plan review. This, I want to thank all the speakers so far. What an amazing amount of logic that has been presented tonight. The Kingstonian will not enable walkability nor improve connectivity, which is, the connectivity was brought up a lot during the the DRI Local Planning Committee process and the documents associated with that. This is a very politically charged situation. Yeah, we all know that Cuomo would be very mad if we didn't fully support the Kingstonian with all this money that has been dedicated to it. It was a grave mistake to not involve the public from the very beginning with this. But there are so many falsehoods, and one that I think is relevant tonight is the connectivity. This would be closing a public street. A park that's on North Front Street now, that is a place that people walk by, people can sit in and see the liveliness of Uptown that ends in an attractive terminus to Wall Street, that would be absorbed by the building's footprint. And a park will be on top of the garage ramp that will be eating Fair Street Extension. A park that's going to be a dead-end street in essence, unless you're willing to walk through a P-tunnel. It's going to be a tunnel that's going to have maintenance requirements, it's going to have possible safety concerns. There's even been talk of closing that tunnel, that walkway over Schwenck Drive that would deposit people directly into Kingston Plaza, that would supposedly be an addition to connectivity, but instead it's just going to make it a little harder. It'll end in an elevator for people with disabilities or, you know, mobility impairments. And the mayor has billed it as a more ADA compliant option. It's a steep hill, but surely, if that was a concern in Kingston to make hills ADA compliant, we could think of something that would be more appropriate. I don't want to ramble on, I'll continue to comment on this, but for goodness sakes, could you start doing the right thing with the Kingstonian? I hope, I mean, I think it's too late with the pilot, but to just hand it over to an authority and not take accountability for this and work with your constituents on this, the planning board is not going to stop this. The site or plan review is not going to stop this. Things have been in motion for a long time. The developers who are getting a windfall, they have the ability to, at the very, very least, change the plans so that they're not going to eat a street. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Tanya. The next speaker is Jennifer O'Donnell. Jennifer, you're in here, you have to unmute yourself.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could just state your name and...
Jennifer O'Donnell, 35 Hone Street. Thank you for the time to speak. You have an important decision to make soon. Just a bit about me, I'm an urban planner and former legislator who speaks with and hears from many other voters and many of you, by the way, about the decisions you have to make. You and they ask me why the rules, especially they, ask me why the rules are being changed to give tax breaks to an organization that is already benefiting from public monies, that could be given public land and a public street that the public has financed for generations. It is universally accepted that closing public streets, cutting off connectivity, and creating mega-blocks development are all considered bad urban planning and bad urban design. Are you aware that the county plan that was adopted by the county's transportation council to extend Fair Street into a proposed redesign of Kingston Plaza as part of a greening and relocalizing of 587 was part of the DRI proposal in the first place? That road, 587, which we would like to declassify as a federal road, also choked off Uptown in a famously bad urban planning boondoggle called Urban Renewal. I will share that beautiful vision with you in a follow-up email. Soon, you will be asked to hand off this land to an unelected body, the KLDC. Here are just some of the ways that the process has ignored the democratic process and the public interest so far regarding planning. One, the interpretation of the mixed-use overlay district disregarded the intent of the zoning. Also, the original zoning required 20% affordable housing for Uptown for very clear reason, to make Uptown more affordable, equitable, and accessible. That is a very powerful economic development goal. Housing the people who also want to work Uptown and in our community rather than shutting them out. This process and this project will do the opposite. Number two, giving a negative declaration during SIKR clearly ignored the potential significant environmental impacts on Uptown, whether historic and/or character, among other things. This complex proposal was not asked to take a hard look at these impacts. Number three, community members who question this project have been attacked by the developer. There was even an effort to muzzle citizens, Kingston citizens, from speaking to their aldermen. Do you remember this? I do. If this were such a righteous and noble endeavor, would that even be necessary? Number four, perhaps the most egregious of the many, many issues here was the Ulster County IDA changing the rules and ignoring the school board's very well-informed decision to vote against the pilot. The board stood up for citizens and took its responsibility very seriously. You represent us, not the mayor, not a political committee, and not an unelected decision-making body such as the KLDC. We live in a republic. You are supposed to represent us as equals. Please don't give up that responsibility. I ask that before that vote, each of you explain your reasons for allowing this process to go to the KLDC when you have a sworn duty to represent and protect the public and the public interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. The next speaker is Kwame Holmes. All you have to do is unmute yourself, and you're in.
All right, did that work?
Hi, if you could just state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Kwame Holmes, and I live at 14 Crane Street. And I oppose the handing over a Fair Street as part of my general opposition to the entire Kingstonian project and particularly to the pilot proposal. I don't think public funds should be donated to luxury developers at a time when anyone who's part of the Hudson Valley and Ulster County and Kingston knows there's enormous demand on the residential housing market. And any developer worth their salt already can see that if they develop here without tax breaks, they'll make a significant amount of money. It just feels like we're being asked to believe something that we all know isn't true, but in a polite fashion and through administrative language and bureaucracy. But the simple fact is that there's no actual need to do supply-side development at a moment when everyone wants to live here and is seemingly willing to pay property taxes here. I don't know why luxury developers wouldn't do the same. So that is my comment, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ethan Barnett, but I'm not seeing him now. He was in earlier. Come back around. Alana Berger, you're next. All you have to do is unmute yourself.
Got it, you can hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Alana Berger. I live on Franklin Street in Kingston. I am, as all of the other speakers, opposed to the taking of Fair Street Extension as connected to my general opposition to the Kingstonian project. I just, you know, whether or not you agree with the project in principle, I think, as the speaker before me was saying, it is just a fact that the economic situation, the housing situation in Kingston is very different than when it was when this project was first proposed. It is a real challenge for me right now to have anyone tell me we need more market-rate housing in a town where we are dealing with homelessness. My kids and I spend a lot of time, like, collecting packages of food and toiletries to get to families who are living in hotels. Like, people need houses, there are homeless people, as Rose said earlier, folks who lived here who now have been priced out. The house across the street from me sold a year ago for $149,000, and just last week sold for $550,000. That's in one year, it went from $150,000 to $550,000. We are creating lots of market-rate housing in this community right now by all the folks moving in. What we, so, you know, if the developers at this point in time, as again, the speaker before me said, want to make their own market-rate housing, that is their right to put their own money into it. It is not the time to be putting millions of our taxpayer dollars into lining their pockets to make more market-rate housing in this city. I mean, you've heard for years now, statistics, I'm not going to sit here and go over all of the numbers that I have heard, you know, the parking that isn't actually parking for the public, the the tax, the devastating consequences for several generations of children in Kingston by losing the tax, you know, what the school district is going to lose by losing tax revenue. I don't, I can keep going on and on about all these numbers. I can say that I think by now we've learned that trickle-down economics doesn't work, and by giving millions of breaks and subsidies to wealthy developers, it does not trickle down to the rest of us. The jobs that are being created are like 40 minimum wage jobs. It's, this is not a benefit to the vast majority of Kingston. Again, I'm not going to convince you by giving you more facts, you've been hearing it all for years. I was shocked this council voted for the pilot the first time around. I thought this was a progressive body in the city. So I can't convince you, I'm hoping that you can convince us that you are actually doing your jobs representing your constituents and the people of Kingston. I heard some talk that Rennie opened up talking about how much we all need to care for each other. Those are empty words if you are giving away the money that actually provide the services that care for people of this city. So I guess, I mean, that's my essential argument. This is this is taxpayer dollars that could go to serving a community that could really use a lot of support right now. The last group of people that I believe need support or taxpayer dollars are developers developing market-rate housing. So I urge you to please listen to these speakers. I hope there's many more after me asking you to do the right thing and represent all of Kingston. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Alana. The next speaker is Claudia Forrest.
Hi, my name is Claudia Forrest. I live on Fair Street in Uptown Kingston. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay. I appreciate the time the other speakers took to prepare their statements. I wrote something down while I was listening to the meeting. I've been a resident of Kingston for five and a half years. Before that, I was a resident of New Paltz for 21 years, where outside corporations also attempted to come into the village and town and build large complexes and receive a pilot. And the town and village of New Paltz residents fought them for the same reasons I'm opposed to the pilot being awarded to the Kingstonian. It benefits the corporations far more than the residents. I think the proposal would put an unfair burden on the Kingston School District, which already voted against it, well, the Board of Education voted against it. Incoming residents will likely include families with children who will be part of this very same school system. It would also put stress on the infrastructure of the city of Kingston, water, electricity, sewage, and would be utilizing the services provided by the city, police, fire, emergency medical services, et cetera. As a resident of Uptown, I walk and bicycle through the city as much as possible to avoid the use of a car in the Uptown area. I use the Fair Street Extension regularly, both on foot and bicycle, and even on one or two occasions when I have to drive to reach destinations that are further than I can go on foot or bicycle. I'm opposed to having it closed off. As a member of Bike Friendly Kingston, though I'm not speaking as a representative, but as myself, I don't wish to see more parking introduced in Kingston, which in turn would definitely attract more cars. In addition to the additional car traffic residents and business owners and customers of this proposed building would create. I'm concerned for the safety of myself as a cyclist and other cyclists. I'm more interested in alternative forms of transportation being introduced into the city and money dedicated to developing that than, rather than developing a building that would be luxury housing, boutique hotel, and shops and restaurants that I, as a Kingston resident, cannot afford and would not frequent. Thank you for hearing me, and I hope you take all of our comments into consideration.
I also believe it's important in today's
I also believe it's important in today's day and age where our administration is focusing on open government and transparency, we need to be able to do a better job of communicating with our residents. And so I believe that Time Warner Cable and Spectrum Services should be providing the appropriate capital support to the city to be able to fund our public educational and government channels here within the city. Of most importance to me is making sure that we can fund a government channel that shares on cable all of our public meetings, our public forums, being able to provide the appropriate amenities within these chambers and within our meeting rooms in this building, to be able to make sure that we can do that effectively, efficiently, and being able to just make sure that all of our residents know what's going on in our city. And I believe that this franchise agreement can help put the necessary resources into that. And so with that, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Just give me a second here. I should put some notes down. In about 10 years, for this, as my passion to come here, it feels like almost every single night to film the council meetings and/or even any meeting in regards to informational and put it out there to the public. I used to do this for a long period of time on our public access station, which now lies in the town of Sopis. And it wasn't for the town of Sopis to take over the public access to provide it. As soon as I get a chance and I'm done uploading it to the internet to the council meeting or press conference, I try to send some stuff over there. And they're very nice to, working with the city of Kingston to figure out a way to keep it going. So I wanted to speak about just my oversight of Time Warner, Spectrum, my service that we receive at home. So I'm able to upload these videos. A lot of times I go to here at City Hall or the library, but it's convenient for me, especially on a cold winter night, to go home and upload a couple of hours at my own house. So I have to, I have to get like high speed. And that sometimes is kind of like frustrating because the speed is always not the same, just to let the council know. And the whole digital thing, argument when it came up is, when the digital box came out, that right now, I don't even have cable because that was more frustrating. And I hear a lot of talk that a lot of people are like that too, where they just like gave up and just let it go. It's unfortunate that this contract only handles the cable aspect of it. It doesn't handle the internet. The city and myself rely more on the internet itself. But I mean, I would love to have public access on or cable on again, but I can't afford it. So the city should really oversee what they're charging for a service itself. And I think if you're getting internet for $60 a month, you should get cable vision along with the basic cable so you can stay informed of it. Because a lot of people, like senior citizens or people that just can't afford cable, are missing out. So hopefully, and I'll like thank the mayor for being very much supportive, informational, transparency in the city of Kingston. So hopefully, that whole public access, internet, public access, or whatever you want to call it, will come and play and inform the citizens of Kingston. Because that's the most important thing. Because if you don't inform the citizens and they don't know what's going on, chances are they're going to come to the meeting full force and, you know, rally you up a little bit. So for my thing, it's like, it's unfortunate too that the city of Kingston is only able to have one franchise agreement with just...